What I see is increasingly our economic development partners. And so matching the forty thousand that we had for the chamber for Carbondale Arts. I do think those conversations about some of that overlap. I think we could clear some of that up, but my intention was not to replace this, but was supplementing whatever I think ended up for Carbondale Arts in here.
But I also agree with you, Christine. I mean, that's the work that we've done over the past few years has been to try to do exactly that, to like close all the other doors because we used to have groups just coming to us and doing these presentations and requesting thirty thousand dollars and ten thousand dollars outside of this process to kind of get their online item. And it was a hard process to streamline that. So I think maybe for next year, Carbondale Arts won't be in here. And whatever we think that we need to give to them as an economic development partner, we do. And these other groups, Stepping Stones and whoever else, Youth Zone, we need to figure out if we have enough tobacco tax to go beyond what the school-based mental health counseling is costing. Originally, we did. Now it seems like we don't. So they're back in here and they're getting relatively small amounts, those groups. But I totally agree. I don't want to kind of have anybody that's allowed to double dip in some way that others aren't.
Yeah, because I just feel like Criminal Arts, they were one of our highest, which is valid. But then we also gave them money again for economic. It's just a little confusing, I feel like. And they take a big chunk from our other nonprofit, nonprofits. So I, like I said, I, this is my second year doing it, and I still find it. Maybe I just need a clear layout of who does get the tobacco money, who like, you know, throughout the year, who gets? What groups already get that? So again, it'll make my decision easier when I'm going through these grants.
Yeah. I mean, just Christine, we haven't allocated any money for the tobacco tax to any nonprofits. And we don't give any of that to Carbondale Arts. We've given it to Youth Zone and Stepping Stones before, but, but we didn't do any of that this year. So we told them to apply through the community grants process. Yeah.
Just an observation that maybe for next year, understanding that the whole group's not going to get together and go through everything. But once you've had a chance to look at what Patrick has provided, maybe we just take a few minutes out of work session and say, are there any questions or the clarifications? Did anybody?
That's a good idea. That's a good idea.
And then you feel a little more informed and you're all on the same page. Yeah.
Yeah. And we could discuss them a little bit without putting any on, like not having presentations from them, but clarity of just like, did this? And even like the Steve's guitars would have been a good little quick discussion of like, this is confusing. Oh, you're reading it as this? I'm not reading it. Maybe we shouldn't do it or whatever.
And I know there's an expectation that they're putting their best foot forward. But if there are questions like that, we could follow up with a select number if you feel like it's just unclear.
Even follow, you mean follow up with the applicant?
Yes, before you're making your determinations.
I think that there should be more time between when we fill this spreadsheet out and when we see it at a meeting to say yes, go. And if that means that there's a work session in between where we get everybody's allocations, that would be good, too.
And we could still, to, you know, be totally transparent, like the budget is locked in on the big number.
Right, right, right.
Right? And so how we distribute that internal to the budget, we could still make changes between now and the next meeting if there's anything that we want to change.
Yeah, I just, I think it might be helpful to, to get this, this, seeing what everybody else did like a couple of weeks before or something. There just needs to be more time between when everything's calculated to when we sit here.
Which depends on us doing it.
We will also next year not schedule right before the deadline, the Northern Light. Because there's a lot of things going around and I almost texted, get inside and do your homework.
Like, I feel like it's, there wasn't enough time between when we are allocating. And, and maybe it's just because I screwed up, but there wasn't any meetings either.
Right. Yeah, you're right. And that's because we canceled for Veterans Day, which was unusual. So yeah, I think just a note for next year, let's have a, everybody do your first draft.
Yeah.
Then have a discussion. Here's where we're all kind of landing. Okay, now go home and finalize it and then we'll see the final one next time.
Right.
I think that would be helpful. Yeah, Chris.
I have one extremely selfish point of order around this appropriations. I didn't do the math until just now, but I do think Ross and I, our organizations were penalized as, as I think our number, our number is counted as zeros essentially instead of divided by six, dividing it by seven. So.
So there, if with how that math worked out, if, if we were, so you, you didn't count as zeros. But specifically like yours, yours did, but Ross's didn't. And unfortunately, like if the, if you decrease yours, it puts us over the budget. Believe it or not, I mean, you can, you can crunch those numbers right off, right, right there if you can. But decreasing that individual or the full, the full board recommendation, it, it puts us over the budget. It was about almost eleven hundred dollars over doing the six as opposed to the seven. And so then just with the amount of time that we had, unfortunately, I didn't have a whole lot of time to rework, work some of these things. So we had to kind of put together the best report that we could with the time that we had. So.
All right.
That's up to you.
Yeah, I don't, I don't really want to like make a whole big deal out of it. But it, it doesn't feel great to be penalized, you know, for that. But I think, also, I guess that does come back to just for next year also. I think it was some confusing, a little bit of confusion in that spreadsheet of like the special events.
Yeah.
Were not actually adding into the overall.
That was a mistake on my, my part. I thought I was very clear about, about the mistake. I apologize if I wasn't. But there again, just we'll be, we'd be better next time. It'll be a more clear spreadsheet.
Just a quick, like quick math question. So can we not go to the, I haven't looked at it. I'm not going to do, do averages right now. But if this, if the, if we just need to create an average for that, for, for those two, average of six instead of average of seven, and then we add them all up and whatever we're over, we divide, we, we take that percentage and sprinkle it, like if that's point oh three percent, we multiply, we subtract that percentage. Basically, there's, there's a simple math way, I promise, to, to spread that out appropriately and proportionately over everything else. And I think, I think we could do that and that would feel better. I don't, I'm not, I.
I mean, I want to be careful to have Patrick go back and try to redo this whole thing.
No, yeah, we have this.
Everybody else's allocations after.
Community access radio, Katie and Kay.
And it affects Ross, it affects the Roaring Fork Youth Orchestra, too, I think.
It actually didn't.
I think, well, I think my math was that it was affecting it as well.
Do you see it?
Yeah, I found it.
I mean, I see the line item. I don't understand the math because I'm not sitting here punching all the numbers in. Digital spreadsheet version to manipulate.
Well, it's, I, I know we don't want to have him redo the thing, but if the math's not right, and we specifically said we didn't want someone not putting a number in to penalize one, like I feel like it's pretty important to make sure that the average is right.
Make a motion to appropriate that extra thousand dollars over.
Yeah.
That's what we want to do.
Let's do that. Can we just make sure that the averages are six for both? Here, I'll do it. I'll make a motion.
I feel like I, we have to gain from that.
Yeah, you do.
Yeah, I think you did. It's not, it's, it is just making an average for, for all, for, for going forward. It's, it's what I proposed before, but I would just, I mean.
It's eight hundred dollars difference than what is on here for Katie and Kay.
So we could increase the total by eight hundred dollars and allocate that.
For that one, if that's the only issue.
All right. I can promise you, I sat here last night. That is the only issue.
Yeah. And I mean, the nice thing with our process next year is that this would actually kind of come up in our little review.
Actually, I, well, we, so. I, I, I did, I put in nothing, not a zero for High Country Symphonia as well, actually. Because I get a two hundred dollar check once a year to play in a couple of concerts. So I would, I would ask that we kind of honor the, the same, the same thing there.
I didn't, I didn't know about that.
Okay, fair, no, it was just, I, I, that's my omission, my omission for.
And I think this is fine. I mean, again, we, it's not impacting the total budget very much if at all. And so I think even without a motion, we can give direction that in the final budget, let's get the division by six on those three nonprofits, it sounds like, that some of our trustees are involved in. So just make sure it's divided by six instead of seven for Katie and Kay, High Country Symphonia, and the Roaring Fork Youth Orchestra.
And Roaring Fork Youth Orchestra is, the math is not divided by six.
I, okay.
I, it's just, I just did it.
Yeah, it's divided by seven.
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll see a final update on those. Was there anything else people wanted to discuss on this?
I just want to say, no, this is really complex and I'm sorry that we're dragging you through the coals here a little bit. In the beginning, I, I, it's really, I really feel, feel for you. And I'm sorry that we're, you know, doing this. But yeah, I, we, I think we're just trying to make it better for the future, too.
Okay, clear? Divide by six will be a little over our one percent, but it's small dollars in the grand scheme of things. Everybody okay with that?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, great. All right, because I don't think we need a motion on that whole thing, right? Because that's just part of the overall budget. Okay, great. Well, let's then jump right into that overall budget unless anybody needs a break. I'm not anticipating a huge discussion here, but I have underestimated talk about things before. Short break. All right. Colin's gearing up. That scares me. Saw your email, Colin. Battle of the Rec Fund continues.
Thank you. Yeah, I like it. Sorry for the, all calls yesterday. That's my one gearing. Sure issue of Sucia.
Thank you.
One, one side is.
Hey, thanks.
I'm just going to hand out, this is an email that the chief sent. One side was to the PD and the other side was just to all staff. And I just thought it was a good email and something that you guys should be aware of because you might hear about.
The good one?
Well, it's good communication. It's a great thing. Chief sent this out to his crew and everyone. I just want everyone to be aware of it. Just using the opportunity. Bring more things in.
That's interesting. Good information. Get a job. Go volunteer somewhere.
Just sit at home and watch some movies like.
Or go volunteer somewhere. Get a job. Go be of service to your fellow here. That's not being of service to your fellow.
Well, good on Chief. That's the right draft.
Maybe he could film Red Hill.
Hey, you were for hire.
I've got a paying job for you.
A pooper scooper patrol on Red Hill.
I'll just send over Red Hill to film.
Yes, yes, perfect.
How much I would give for that, have that amount of food.
Well, that.
For me so that I can stand on the corner and film.
Which is.
Intent is to make money to suit people, but so.
We're just, we're just views on. That's the only way it does things.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, everybody's back. Call meeting back quarter and proceed with the second read of the budget.
All right. Thank you, Mayor and members of the board. We handed out an update. Colin had found some issues that we needed to address earlier in the day. Hopefully, everybody had a chance to look at that email. And then we also found an error in our calculation, a cell that was pulling from the wrong place. So we're going to work from this piece of paper if that's okay for everybody. All right.
I'll just say, you know, even with some small mistakes, which is fine, like that's the purpose, right? That's why we read it multiple times. What I said to Ryan when I checked in and first read this was, this is the clearest one page of our budget that I've ever seen. It really is. In, in ten years of reading these budgets, we've gone through a lot of different iterations to try to get clarity. It's hard to get there with all the different funds and all that, but I really like this one page. I think it's very understandable. So thank you.
I really appreciate this page, the second page you just handed out. So thank you very much. Yeah, again, it's all about us understanding what the budget is. And each year we get a little bit better, but there's always a gap. And so I appreciate the quick turnaround. Yeah. Sorry I didn't get to you until this morning.
No problem. Appreciate all the eyes on it. I think.
Yeah, it's all good.
Appreciate the, the positive feedback. Ola and I were talking and Ola said, well, that's great feedback. Just let them know that it's only about ten percent of where I want everything to be. So I think when we go through this process next year, we'll be in, we'll be feeling a lot better about where we are, but appreciate that feedback that it's, it's getting clear. So with that, thank you. And as you said, Mayor, we are, we're still drafting, working towards a final, but we're getting closer. And I'll have Ola walk through, a lot of the revenues were some of the things that we were really tweaking. And I'll let him walk through some of that and then I'll go through some of the kind of other things that I think we need to kind of figure out this evening. So with that, I'll turn it over for some conversations about revenue.
Great, thanks, Ryan. And yeah, thank you all for your patience and understanding. And I suppose if you weren't confused before, hopefully you will be now. But yeah, we'll work off these sheets here. Yeah, just a couple, a couple formula errors. I think there's still a little bit of misunderstood, little confusion about the actual fund policy and, you know, these one-time pass-throughs, one-time expenses, you know, really what qualifies as, as a capital one-time and what's a carry forward and those sort of things. So I think to get to that real percentage and will, is still needs a little bit of, of sorting out. So thank you for your patience there and thank you, Colin, for all your, your comments. I think it was very helpful. On the first draft of the budget, this is the second draft to really reflects everything that was in the first draft. We, I made a lot of adjustments or changes to mostly the revenue side of things. In the first draft, we really focused on a lot of the expense side with a lot of the departments chipping in and building those budgets out line by line. And so the, most of the changes that you see from draft one are on the revenue side. From the sales tax collection side, which is obviously our biggest revenue number, we took a very conservative approach, maybe too conservative. Some might argue the revenue for 2025 is through September actuals. And then we use 2024 revenue for October, November, December. So that gets you the 2025 projected year end. For 2026, we just said zero percent increase. So for every one percent increase in sales tax revenue is about a hundred thousand dollars. So ninety seven thousand or so is the forecast right now. You can see some of the municipalities up and down the valley here, range from three and a half percent in Pittkin County and three percent in Aspen. They're in a little bit of different situation than we are. So Mass Village is also up at three percent. And then zero percent in Carbondale, Glenwood Springs and Eagle County, negative one percent. So, you know, definitely a conservative approach there on, on sales tax revenue. Some of the other revenue changes, the big impacts include the highway user tax increase. That's really coming from the Department of Revenue forecasts. So they, they provide these forecasts every year for 2025 projected year ends and then give you some guidance, a little bit of guidance for next year. So the highway user tax increase of twenty six percent of about fifty thousand dollars in the 2026 budget. The mineral leasing tax decrease, this is, I, I think really what caused a lot of the, the shortfall down in Garfield County. The, especially the severance tax was, was a big decrease, but twenty six thousand or seventeen percent in the mineral leasing tax. And then the mineral severance was a decrease of ninety five percent. And that was due to, their forecast was, they just had provided a huge amount of tax credits in the 2024, 2025 season and didn't expect that to occur again. The building use permits, we don't expect another big project like A and B Bank. So we reduced that project by a hundred and fifty thousand or that line item by a hundred and fifty thousand. And that is, that's the major changes to all of the revenues. And then if you have any questions about any of the other smaller changes, happy to get into those. A lot of the other changes were really just looking at 2025 year-to-date and how that's been pacing and just using that pacing to project forward through the end of this year and for next year. But taking a conservative approach for all those as well.
Just pause there. Are there any questions on the revenue forecast? I would just say that is very conservative to use 2024's quarter four, even though we know we've been up over 2024 every month so far this year. And if we were in a really tight situation where we were really trying to squeeze in some priority and we needed to balance, I'd say increase that revenue forecast. We're not in that situation. We have healthy fund balance. So, you know, I think it's just good to remember, like worst case scenario, if we're conservative is revenues come in higher than anticipated, we build up fund balance, we have more money to do more projects. But as we start to talk about things, if we feel a squeeze, like we got to this point last year and we said, let's say one percent on sales tax, and then we ended up much higher than that, I think.
Yeah, I think we, you forecasted too high for the, for Q4 in 2024. So we're kind of going the, the exact opposite side here, being, being very, very conservative there. And for the December ninth meeting where we plan on finalizing the budget, we, that is a Tuesday. We should get the October sales tax revenue on Monday. So we should at least have that little piece of information.
Okay. All right. So is everybody comfortable with that then? A zero percent? It's never happened, except for the Great Recession, our sales tax has gone up significantly every year.
I just have one question. I didn't see Garfield County on here. What are they forecasting?
We can, I can, like, we can get back to you on that. I'm not sure.
And Rafa usually.
Rafa usually compiles, but we're getting the same information from Rafa that they shared because they get it from us.
I just, I just meant Garfield County might already have, we might be able to look in a Rafa package.
No, actually, I don't think we include Garfield County since they're not a member.
Gotcha.
Yeah, this was, this was what, what Rafa has as well.
Okay.
Yeah. And, and, you know, so yeah, both Glenwood and Carbondale are at zero. That's the bulk of the sales tax in Garfield County. Rifle's a little bit higher than us, but, you know, I can't imagine it's going to be that different.
Yeah, and this is a zero percent on a very conservative year-end forecast.
Okay. It seems like that's fine, but I mean, we're just trusting that if that's what you guys feel like we need to do and be conservative. If you said we really feel more comfortable with a one or a two percent or whatever, I think we'd be open to discussing that.
Yeah, Mayor, to your point, I think the, really what you're just going to see is you're going to see an increase in the fund balance percentage. So because we're already in a healthy place, you know, we're not trying to squeeze every dollar out. So it really is just, what's your fund balance going to be? Is it going to be higher than what we are showing here?
Yeah. Yeah, and it's just good to remember that our budget is based on a guess of what the future will look like, right? If the economy soars, like we got it totally wrong during COVID, everybody thought we'd be flat or down and it kept going up and up and up. And so we never get it quite right. But it's like, if we're going to get it wrong, we'd rather have more revenue coming in than we thought than less. So, and then we just adjust for the next year. It's almost like we're always a year behind with our revenue forecasts and I've gotten comfortable with that.
Yeah. And unlike the state, we don't have to give it back.
Right, right. Okay, let's keep going. It sounds like we're good with the revenue forecast.
How do you want to jump into the other items or is there anything else before that? Any questions?
I mean, I think we're just, wherever you guys want to lead us.
You bet.
So far, we've talked about revenue.
So let's jump into the things that we talked about at prior meetings. We did plug in, if that was the exact number or if it was a direction to just do a little bit more on the housing replenishment, that's normally two hundred thousand a year. We plugged in three fifty with the understanding that there was a significant drain on that fund for the purchase of the parks. Successful purchase of those parks. So that is at three fifty. Any questions on that?
And that's listed as a capital expenditure. In reality, it's just a fund transfer, right? From one fund to another, we're just kind of earmarking it and then it feels more available to spend on housing.
Correct.
So it'll still be as part of our overall fund balance. Does that sound right? I mean, Colin, you made the push for increasing that at last meeting.
I want you to go to five, but that's, okay, I can live with three fifty.
That feels right to me. Yeah. And again, if an opportunity comes up, like all we're doing is earmarking it and we're not actually spending it. And it's not restricted if it's in the general fund, so.
All right, tobacco tax.
And we're on page four of the packet if anybody wants to follow exactly where we are.
Yeah. Superintendent was before you. About middle school coverage. I think tobacco is kind of an interesting conversation in that those funds do appear to be declining over time. I think that's the trend that a lot of communities are seeing and that's a trend, I think. Those actions were put in. But becoming, and on those, the more, sorry, I feel like this keeps cutting out.
Great idea.
Okay, it is in the budget. So when we're talking about the opportunity to fund additional nonprofits, I think the challenge is that over time, if you become reliant on that and it's dropping down, you can have a challenge if we want to continue funding the school district at the level that we have historically. And they do have additional needs now. So I think I have a side note here that when we get to the end of the year, again, we're always projecting and we don't know if there are additional funds, things like the recommendation or the suggestion that hmm, maybe we might be able to do some work assisting with some of those pool admissions. Maybe that's an opportunity that we'll know at the end of the year. But projecting and having nonprofits rely on something that we don't really know and it is decreasing, I think is challenging. So if we're talking about the school district and the historic funding and the need that they identified for the middle school, which I heard some level of interest in from the board, then I think that could be what you do with your tobacco revenues. And then at the end of the year, this year, next year, if there are additional funds, we could talk about how you might want to distribute those. But with that declining and the school district need going up, that's kind of where we sit. So if we're looking at projecting, again, conservatively, two hundred thousand for 2026, you could eat that whole revenue source up just with the school district. So just putting that out there for conversation.
And the district probably needs to get to a certain number to hire the person or, or can they hire a part-time thing or something?
I mean, I think that was, you know, the, an FTE was eighty to a hundred. And so I think there was some conversation there as well as if the board wanted to put that out there as, all right, here's, here's some funds. If someone could match those or if they could find matching to get that position hired. But conservatively, again, I think forty gets you closer to where that declining revenue looks like it might land or plateau or whatever you would call that.
I'm going to stay out of the discussion, but I'll help facilitate it. I mean, it, it sounds like the question is whether the board wants to just fund some of this middle school position in addition to the other position.
And this is a school position, not a contracted position with any of our nonprofit applicants? Or is there, is there a pass-through situation a little bit?
Would be through Aspen Hope Center, probably.
Okay.
How all of their counselors or mental health is happening.
Question for me is whether it actually gets. Question for me is whether it actually gets you there. Like, do you actually get service in the middle school or is it just a like?
I think I think we could. Hold the forty thousand and go to the district and say, what does this get us? Like, I think we should budget for the forty and then see how it helps. And we can always say, well, if it doesn't get us what we think we need in the schools. Tell us how we can get there or how you can meet us there or we just don't give it to them.
And we could distribute it a different way.
Yes. I think we should. I think we should allocate it as being spent. And then work with the school district or stepping stones or whoever.
Okay.
Yeah, we can. We can work with the the district to find out if, like your question's a good one, is there a part time opportunity? How how would that forty thousand change the equation at the middle schools come back and provide that information?
And even if they don't have all the answers before the budget is accepted, we can allocate it.
Yeah, we can placeholder it.
Figure that out later, right?
Sure.
Sounds like a good approach.
That sounds good to everybody.
Yeah.
All right, we'll do that.
And then I do love the idea of at the end of the year, kind of evaluating where we're at. I kind of wish we'd been doing that with this fund a little bit of just like. I mean. Ages ago, Garfield County, they called it their over under grant at the very end of the year. It'd be like their last budget meeting. And I went with Alice and got money for G C E or Clear one time because they were like, okay, we, you know, this was this allocated fund. We could put some more money elsewhere and made a decision in December, right before they approved the budget or, you know, which was kind of handy. Actually, no, it was leftover money from that year. But we don't have to do that. But I'm just saying, I like the idea of us seeing where that fund ends. And then maybe we let stepping stones and youth zone know, okay, we've got, you know, five to ten grand for each of you. Here you go. Or something like that.
Yeah, I think we've had that conversation about even though it's not its own fund, just keeping an eye and tracking exactly where that's going. And we'll see, yeah, if it keeps dwindling, there may not be that opportunity if we're going to continue funding the district. But we'll track that and understand.
And are we tracking marijuana too? Is that sort of in that lumped in there too? Or is it sort of often?
Marijuana has much more permissive ballot language in, I don't have it off the top of my head. It was not for.
Can be for the general fund, basically.
Yeah, it was for not, it wasn't any other municipal purpose, but it was something buried town use, any town use, which is pretty broad. So. Yeah, I think historically we have talked about, you know, in our minds, I guess, where that's being allocated with some of the programs that the chief works with. But it's really, it's not been tracked. And again, it's for any town purpose.
Okay, just sort of on a, I mean, I know how this is traditionally, I don't know, I guess, a number of years that it's this is, this has been money given to the district. And this is the only area in which we do that. And it seems like we could also choose to do this through a nonprofit gift and get there. And I'm just, I'm just wondering whether whether we is there is, are we comfortable? And I think I am, but I'm just like, we're comfortable with giving money to the district out of, because there's any number of things that we could do that would be worthwhile. Give that we could fund within the district. Music teacher, like one that pops to mind, but but I mean, but. You know, and and I don't, you know, and we and so we sort of get into a position of like, I guess, if this is the, if this tax kind of happens to come to us, but we really feel like this is the place to put it. And the only place to put it, I feel great with that if we feel like it's we. By giving our own, you know, part of our own tax tax stream there. If we might better or more efficiently give it directly to an organization. Another organization and kind of keep keep a little bit of distance from the the district. I could see some, I could see some logic to that. But if we're all fine with it too, then then fine. Yeah. And that's not then. And that's just an open ended thought question.
I think traditionally, or I know how it started was we were paying for half of an F T E for the counselor position at the high school. Out of our marijuana tax funds. So it went to the school district because it was, I I can't remember if they partnered with Hope Center right away. But if they had their own employee, then it started that way. Then Hope Center got really amazing and are providing all these services. So then they had a contract with Hope Center and they had a matching grant from the state.
Okay.
That was really covering a lot of the costs. So then by us pitching in, they were able to show the state, the towns in. So that was kind of the like logical nature for them to get this funding and then the state no longer is providing this grant. So now they're scrambling because it's not part of their budget because they're dealing with their own budget woes. So I think we, I mean, potentially could reach out to the Hope Center or something, but I think it kind of gets us to the same ends either way.
Seems cleaner to me to stay within the program they have established than trying to set up some separate channel, but.
And it might be that we, the forty thousand can help them get a different grant that maybe they're looking at for the middle school service or something. I don't know.
It's still a great question. I mean, effectiveness, right?
Sure. Yeah.
Right. We want the money to be effective.
Imp precedent, you know, sure.
But I think I think the school, the district's shown that it's really being well used and it's well received and enjoying it. It's really having an impact on a lot of kids. So if if it's working, let's keep doing it.
Next one's not twenty twenty six, but it is something that came up. So we put it, put it in here. I did. Reach out to Elise at Liptup and she provided a couple of stats just to kind of give perspective on where they are. I know this situation has been in flux and but the first week of November pantry visits increased fifteen percent over the same timeframe. In October and twenty six percent over September, served a thousand and one individuals in that one week. A lot of them were new guests or households that were returning earlier in the month than usual, just reflecting the deepening need. As SNAP was disrupted. And the other item she noted was that Carbondale's pantry is plays a critical role in their overall response throughout their the region. One of six pantries. She did note that it was the most expensive as far as leasing space at one hundred and fifteen percent more than any of their other spaces. So any contribution from the town, she said, would be would help make a tangible difference. Obviously, it's not just cost of food, but it's staff time and logistics. So that was some background that she provided. And again, kind of a twenty twenty five conversation, I think, but we just put that in there.
Yep. Thanks for raising it. I think I had raised it during just public comment when we were imminently seeing SNAP benefits. We didn't know if they'd come back, so.
Like they weathered the storm. We just allocated them forty four hundred from the community grant. So that's, that's one of those where it's like, I'm so, I just have to be so careful to say to all these groups because they approached me and they approached Ryan. And they say, can we get outside that community grant program? Can we get more money than everybody else? And it's like, once you start to open that, it's really hard to draw any boundaries around it.
Yeah.
I'm comfortable. I think I'm comfortable sticking with the community grant allocation for now. I mean, we can always revisit this if another disruption happens.
Anywhere.
Yeah, any day of the week.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Okay.
Yeah, I I think globally, going back to the grants too, I. You know, one percent's a great number. But if we are seeing a lot of, you know, new nonprofits, obviously, we can have that conversation if we feel like it's not quite having the impact. That it had historically, but that's down the road.
Sounds great.
Okay. Chacos Park. Continued conversation about Chacos Park. I think where we ended our last conversation was undergrounding. There's consensus that we could move forward there. And we looked at the one percent fund. There's four hundred and thirty thousand in there. Not sure if that covers everything. Looking back at the Chacos Park planning document, there is a number of two hundred and fifty thousand in there. I don't I don't know where that came from. We wanted to make sure that if undergrounding is important and we want to do that in twenty twenty six, that we put a little bit extra in the budget on top of. What Excel has in one percent fund, just to make sure that we can do that. Don't know if that'll be necessary. I would love to think that maybe that two fifty number was. A good number. I just know that the way things go, it's probably not, it's probably closer to anything we do is increasing costs. So the second part of that conversation, when we last met was, is there something that we could do? That was maybe not the whole phase one and really talking with staff there. It's really difficult to start to try and do something in Chacos Park that is not really part of the plan. But that could provide benefit until we get to the plan. And and so I think the real conversation is, no, that estimate that was in the master plan for phase one. Of five hundred thousand is really what we're talking about. However, that also was not based on anything that I think we really feel firm footing on. And so when we're looking at. Where we could end up in twenty twenty six, I think staff's recommendation would be, let's get. The construction documents where they need to be and then get a real understanding of what that whole project might be. Then when we're looking at fund balance, it's a, it's a big project and you could eat up most of that just on this project. But where does that project really rank with respect to a lot of the other capital needs that are out there? And some of which I think we don't know yet. We've had the conversations about, okay, what might some of our facilities need? When I look at, when we're talking about housing, when we're looking at the out years for capital planning on housing. To be determined, to be determined, to be determined. And so we don't really have numbers in there yet. I know that Town Center's important conversation. Anyway, long way of saying. Our recommendation is let's see what those numbers really are. And then in the first quarter of next year, when we're talking about a lot of those capital needs, figure out where is that project? Where does it fit? Could we do a phase one? And so I think, long story short, maybe a hold there until we have more information.
I would say that. I think phase one is undergrounding. Like that, that's like a really good place to start. I think that if we're budgeting for undergrounding and we've already said we're going to get to construction documents. It seems like a really great way to start the project. I have. Almost zero faith in those numbers from the estimations based on design documents. Just from what I know. About the market right now.
And you think construction documents will get you a heck of a lot closer?
I can, you can send construction documents out to bid, like you could actually get real bids.
Yeah, that that seems a lot more realistic than.
I I don't, I think it's really. I don't think you should count on five hundred thousand dollars to get through that offensive platform shade, structure and planting beds.
And that's what I think Steph is agreeing with.
Yeah.
It's like, we can't trust that number. So based on last time, instead of just putting a placeholder in and hoping it's enough. We're not putting anything in other than the undergrounding, which is almost all from Excel. And the construction documents, which is a carry forward because we already had that in this year's budget. So it's really just saying, let's revisit this once we know what the pricing is. And once we have, Ryan and I have been talking a lot about what is was our first few months of twenty twenty six look like? Once we get past the budget and past the holidays and all that. And what we're talking about is a real thorough discussion about our capital plan. Where we can really prioritize things and get better estimates of pricing. Now that we know the fire district tax tax question did pass, that does limit our revenue, you know, increases. So how are we going to pay for these things and what are we really going to commit to? And talking about the rec fund and to what degree it should stand alone and pay for every single thing of park and rec versus, you know, just big capital projects, like all those things. We can have those discussions early in the new year. And then if we say, okay, we've got pricing and we've had our discussion and the first thing on our list is to get the shade and stage and all that at Chacos Park. Then we can make that as a budget adjustment. So I think that's the other thing to remember is that this budget can be amended. And so we tend to think of it, I tend to think of it as like, you get one shot at it and then it's there for the year. But Ryan has kind of expanded my thinking on that, that we could come back to this. So I'm I'm comfortable with where we are. I was ready to put the five hundred in there, but. That's through our discussion last time and thinking about it and talking to Ryan, and I think this is a very reasonable proposal. So. Are people good with this?
Yeah. Oh, you you should, yeah, talk about your news.
No, so I, two, two thoughts. One, one, I I I think I generally agree. If if the consensus is it would be take a miracle for the for the construction pricing to be something that we would be gung ho. About going ahead with. Do we want to pay? And we have the opportunity now. It is a budget. Carry carry over or not, it's not set in stone. Do we want to pay? For construction documents now? Or do we want to wait till we feel like it's it's a project that even like is in our ballpark? And I feel like. You know, the original, the original proposal was a million bucks for Chacos Park. And we said no, and then it was five hundred thousand. And then we said, well, we can probably do, we, we said no, but but we'll use the the undergrounding fund. The Excel's one percent to to do that, which is still, you know, which is still a decision to to fund the park. It comes, it does come from somewhere else in our budget. I, and this could, this may very well be an unpopular opinion, having been over there. I think it's going to be amazing, the difference of undergrounding. And at that point, I would hate for us to be locked into a design or a project or momentum. That still hasn't dealt with other issues with of that that have been brought up with with that sort of now contiguous plot, which includes the launch pad. Which includes theoretically bathrooms. And and if there were some takeaways, you know, some learning lessons from from D de los Muertos, it was one that that's the the Chacos Park wasn't was underutilized. And two, the bathrooms are the math, the bathroom scene there is a mess. I also think it's, it it behooves us to to triple down on making some discuss, having some discussions. About those parking spots. And if there's some way that we can get those, holy cow, that opens up an option. Right now, we've really siloed Launchpad and we've really siloed that park. And if that's a decision that, you know, I gave a thumbs up to, I apologize. And I I would rather have a moment to take a breather and just say, hey, eighty percent of this document is great. Eighty percent of this design is great, but if we could eliminate those parking spots and if it's worth the discussion, I mean, it certainly is worth the discussion. And and somehow draw a connection between the Launchpad and the spot, then then let's do that instead of locking ourselves into an idea. That that really silos those those. Those two spots and kind of turns its back on on the Launchpad. And I I I just feel like an opportunity could be missed if we say today, hey, we don't really want to do this anytime real soon. But we're going to go ahead and lock in our our con, our design with these construction documents. And and I completely, I, you know, I defer to the the wisdom of the board, but that would be really my plan. Let's do the undergrounding. Let's make that happen. Everything else, let's take a breather.
Just to be clear, you're talking about going back months in schematic design and redesigning the whole park, really? If you're talking about shifting things and taking and expanding the scope of the project to include that. To me, we went through a huge iterative design project with lots of different stakeholders involved and all that. And. There are these concerns. So, yeah, we've always wanted those parking spaces, but they're not ours. So I think those conversations could continue. But this would be taking us back to rethinking the design is what you're talking about.
Hey, perhaps, yeah, perhaps some elements of it for sure. Absolutely. And I think that's, I think we can learn. And and if we're given, like, I'm just saying, before we let momentum absolutely carry us a hundred percent forward. I'm just saying, it's something that I've recognized being over there and and spending more time with like with the, you know, on the, on the big days that matter with that space. And having a chance to really see what it's going to look like with those wires down, which is amazing and totally worth it. And, you know, what, one reason, you know, one reason we moved that schematic to design forward is that we were promised that we had to do it. We had to do it because because we had to go get this grant. Let's get this schematic to a hundred percent because we have to go get this grant. And now, you know, I I I would have pushed back on that, I think, in hindsight.
Okay, let's hear from somebody else, please. Do we, do we really want to go this far back and redo the schematic design? And I don't know that, actually, that's not a decision we have to make right now. I'd rather stay focused on this budget and whether we, I mean, to Ross's point, Ross isn't ready to put construction documents in.
That's, and that's fine. We don't have, yeah, we don't have to do that. I mean, but I'm, we can. That's, and that's fine. We don't have, yeah, we don't have to do that. I mean, we, but I'm, we can, I'm just saying, I don't think we should put construction documents. We should be pushing ahead with that right now if we're not.
Because I think Jess has made the point that you can't really get pricing until you do construction documents. And so that's been a key part of the, the process. But if we want to redo the whole design and kind of go back to the drawing board, that would be a different thing. Erica?
Well, and I was, I mean, Ross, I feel like sometimes you phrase things in that, like, somebody's forced this project onto us. And we decided to move forward with it. We decided as a group that we wanted to have a conceptual design put together. And so there wasn't anybody, you know, convincing us that we had to do it for any reason. It was, we donated this land with the parking places that is in, that is in the agreement for us taking the park. So we're grateful that it didn't go, you know, nobody bought it and tried to build a building there. But I mean, the parking spots are there, and unless we spend years negotiating with the people who gave it to us to try and find them other parking, I mean, they just really, it's the same. We have parking spaces allocated right over here at Town Center for them. And that was just part of the agreement for the gift. So I just think, I mean, again, I, I, I think we get the design documents so that we know the pricing, we can at least get, you know, quotes if we don't get a full RFP, like, we're going to go to construction, but we get some, some better estimates. It also would help us with actually figuring out what phasing would make sense, because then we would see, see quotes, we could talk to contractors about it. And it would be, documents would be available for if we did want to go after some grants, which our staff are really good at doing. So I just, to me, it makes sense that we keep moving forward with this part so that we can implement the parts that we are really excited about if we can find the funding or if it makes sense.
I would. I would just. I understand that the process isn't perfect and that I just caution us from starting over or going backwards on things like this, because it ends up costing taxpayer dollars, more taxpayer dollars to delay and re-study and redo design. I, I have been on both sides of the table for things like this and have sit in, sat in this valley for my entire life and watched us study the entrance to Aspen and redesign the entrance to Aspen a hundred times when we know what the solution is. And I, it, we are probably seventy-five percent of the way to a design. Construction documents from design documents is not a big jump. And I just, I get really uncomfortable with us saying, let's go back and rethink this whole thing in order to make it perfect, because it's not going to be perfect, no matter how many times we study it. And we can talk about the bathrooms as a separate project. And I know that sounds like more money, but the, we can add, we can add that in. We could also have that conversation within the construction document conversation. Like, there's ways to do this without going backwards.
I'd be, I mean, any, any of, I mean, if we have bathroom discussions within the context of construction documents, that's, I mean, that's great. I would assume that that would be, that would be called a design, you know, some sort of design change. I, I'm not saying.
Design changes happen all the time in construction documents. I just don't want to, I don't want to get us to the point where we're reading things.
Yeah, okay. So Ross has made a case for not doing construction documents. Does anybody else want to remove construction documents from the budget? Because if not, I think we should move on.
My question is with the construction, construction documents, like, if we do, if we proceed to do them, don't they expire? Like, I don't even know, they never expire?
No.
We're not like submitting for permit.
Okay, no, construction documents are just, are just, and construction documents change during construction, like, all the time.
Okay.
So construction documents are just like the next phase of design so that you can go get pricing.
Okay.
They're going to include more details on utilities, more details on how much concrete, details on how many trees.
So it's not pricing, it's just basically.
It's just a, the next step in design with more details, and then you can go get pricing. And you don't even have to go out to RFP to get pricing.
Okay. Are we good moving forward? Yeah, Chris?
I guess I would just say that, I mean, I, I appreciate where you're coming from there. I feel like I'm somewhere in between here in terms of like, I am wary of over-designing, you know, having a, having a person spend three weeks designing the water feature or something, you know, in immaculate detail with all of the, you know, piping and stuff that that involves, and then we have, then.